I'd like to welcome you to this meeting of the College Station Independent School Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. A detailed agenda information was made available to us at least seventy-two hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take actions so as to adhere by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us. We're very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest and support of our students. Dr. Edley?
Thank you, Dr. Yocan. Welcome, everyone. This is one of the best nights of the year because we get to honor so many of our students, many of whom are in this room, some are still outside. So, we'll get to the honoring here in just a second, but we will begin with our pledges of allegiance to the American flag, the Texas flag, and our moment of silence. And we have some great students from College Station High School and A&amp;M Consolidated High School: Ben Hannick, Sam Crockett, Lacy Hawthorne, and Rachel Fitzgerald. If you guys would come up here and lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing for my moment of silence. You may be seated.
(inaudible)
Hello, I'm Sam Crockett. I'm in College Station High School, and I'm the student body vice president for this year.
I'm Ben Hannick, and I am the student body president of College Station High School.
I'm Rachel Fitzgerald, and I'm a part of our school's student council. I'm the social chair.
I'm Lacy Hawthorne, and I'm the student body vice president for A&amp;M Consolidated High School.
Congratulations. Thank you all so much. Okay. Under our recognitions, we'll begin with newspapers at both of our high schools. A&amp;M Consolidated High Schools' The Roar Newspaper and College Station High Schools' The Catamount Newspaper. Each recently earned a Silver Star Award at the Interscholastic League Press Conference Spring Convention. Only twenty-two scholastic newspapers in the entire state of Texas receive a gold, silver, or bronze award, with only twelve receiving gold or silver awards. Along with over the high overall rankings, both staff racked up individual awards. And as I call your name, please come forward to be recognized.[258.14][258.14](laughter) All right, V. Yeah, okay, so, excellent. I'm glad you made it in the door.[266.12][266.12](laughter) So, from The Roar, V Burgess, editor-in-chief of The Roar. She earned the ILPC Newspaper Editor of the Year Award. She also won first place in in-depth news/feature story, first place in entertainment page design. And so, if you go right there, and we'll get you your award, and shake the board's hand.[285.33][285.33](applause) Abby Hopkins, print, first place in sports feature photograph, first place photo portfolio.[300.38][300.38](applause) June Jong, print, first place in-depth news/feature story.[313.95][313.95](applause) Amelia Kirk, print, first place infographic/sidebar, first place headlines.[326.62][326.62](applause) And Jennifer Zahn, print, first place entertainment review.[336.03][336.03](applause) Our newspaper advisors are Michael Williams and Chauncey Lindner from Kennesaw, Courtney Wellman and Teresa Laffin from College Station High School.[348.47][348.47](applause) So, only twelve high schools received a gold or silver award, and both high schools received a silver. So, that's amazing in the state of Texas. Congratulations to both schools. Thank you all so much.[368.62][368.62](applause) We do have a few chairs up here for those who would like to come forward to have a seat. Thank you. All right, now we're moving on to academic UIL. Students from A&amp;M Consolidated High School and College Station High School recently won state titles in team current issues, ready writing, chemistry, and biology at the Texas UIL Academic Championships. Please, please come forward when I call your name. The AMCHS Current Issues Team won its fifth consecutive state championship, five in a row. The contest consisted of answering forty questions regarding current events. The questions ranged from mainstream-like details about the Senate's nuclear option to the obscure, like a discovery of a scrap of a dress once owned by Queen Elizabeth. In addition, the students wrote essays about the current state of the Texas Legislature as a part of the event. The team consisted of Benjamin Lamb, who won third individually. Come on up, Benjamin.[433.25][433.25](applause) Nico Mockery, who won fourth individually.[440.81][440.81](applause) Kennesaw's Kay Watson won the state championship in the ready-writing competition with her essay about the effects of isolation on individuals. She linked the topic to psychology, social media, current events, literature, and her essay will be published in the University Interscholastic League in the coming weeks. Watson is coached by Daniel Posey.[506.03][506.03](applause) College Station High Schools' Jason Tan finished second overall in the science competition, winning the state championship in chemistry and biology along the way. Tan answered questions on a sixty-question exam that focused on the importance of experiments and the scientific discoveries in biology, chemistry, and physics. Is Jason here? Okay, thank you. And he is coached by Casey Aiken.[535.29][535.29](applause) You may have noticed some red jackets when you entered the room. Those are our friends from Skills USA. A total of twenty-six College Station ISD high school students recently won their respective events at the Skills USA State Leadership and Skills Conference to earn a spot in the national contest this summer. A&amp;M Consolidated High School and College Station High School students were among the eighty-five hundred competitors from all over the state of Texas who descended upon Corpus Christi for the annual state contest, where the students participated in four days of leadership and hands-on skill competitions. The following teams and individuals won the state championship in their respective event and will advance to the national contest this summer. Beginning with the A&amp;M Consolidated High School 3D Animation Team, Josie Meyer.[586.49][586.49](applause) The A&amp;M Consolidated High School Additive Manufacturing Team, 3D printing.[610.00][610.00](laughter) Represented by Jedidiah Romo.[615.04][615.04](applause) The A&amp;M Consolidated High School Applied Engineering Team, John Primrose.[650.66][650.66](applause) The A&amp;M Consolidated High School Career Pathway Showcase and Information Technology Team, led by Spencer Williamson.[695.91][695.91](applause) Delphine D'Yomo.[741.25][741.25](applause) From College Station High School, the Digital Cinema Production Team, Anna Batson.[766.49][766.49](applause) College Station High School Health Knowledge Bowl Team, Ellen Wang.[798.43][798.43](applause) College Station High School Interactive Application and Game Design Team, Bryson Greenwood.[848.75][848.75](applause) Carson Brown.[855.38][855.38](applause) Gone from interactive game design to related technical mathematics. John Xu Huang, A&amp;M Consolidated High School.[886.25][886.25](applause) A&amp;M Consolidated High School Web Page Design Team, Katie Gray.[895.91][895.91](applause) Web Page Design Individual, Gabriel Langley, A&amp;M Consolidated High School.[923.82][923.82](applause) College Station ISD Skills USA advisors and coaches who coached one or more of the teams or individuals above include Steven Green from College Station High School.[937.25][937.25](applause) Shannon Jones, A&amp;M Consolidated High School.[945.38][945.38](applause) Beth Waleen from College Station High School.[956.62][956.62](applause) Jason Waleen from College Station High School.[963.93][963.93](applause) Patrick Powell from A&amp;M Consolidated High School.[973.99][973.99](applause) French Symposium is next. College Station ISD high school students recently won multiple awards, and A&amp;M Consolidated won its third consecutive state championship at the fifty-fourth Annual Texas French Symposium. Students begin by taking a two-hour test of grammar, vocabulary, listening skills, and cultural knowledge. This is followed up by a full day of speaking, musical, and cultural events. Students must advance from preliminary to semifinal rounds and then to the finals in order to place in the top six of each event. Out of more than nine hundred individual competitors, six of the top ten overall winners were from College Station ISD.[1045.04][1045.04](applause) Please come forward to be recognized when I call your name. The following individuals placed in the top ten overall and or won first place in an event in their respective competition level. Jackson Hall from A&amp;M Consolidated High School.[1064.33][1064.33](applause) Jack placed second place overall, first place in dictée, I don't know, I don't speak French.[1076.54][1076.54](laughter) First-place baccalaureate, it looks like, team. For his efforts, Hall earned a trip to the prestigious Concordia French Immersion School in Montreal, Canada this summer.[1085.04][1085.04](applause) Selena Lee from A&amp;M Consolidated High School.[1094.16][1094.16](applause) Selena was third place overall, first place in comic strip, first place in acrylic painting, first place in vocabulary test, first place in the baccalaureate team.[1107.62][1107.62](applause) Victoria Carrera, A&amp;M Consolidated High School.[1116.00][1116.00](applause) Victoria placed fifth overall, first place in poetry, first place baccalaureate team. Amanda Rasmussen, A&amp;M Consolidated High School.[1128.33][1128.33](applause) Amanda tied for seventh place overall, first place in sight-reading. Kay Watson coming back, A&amp;M Consolidated High School.[1138.83][1138.83](applause) Kay also tied for seventh place overall, first place in comic strip.[1148.00][1148.00](applause) Elena Kang Lansberg, A&amp;M Consolidated High School.[1158.57][1158.57](applause) Elena was eighth place overall, first place in civilian test, first place in vocabulary test, first place in baccalaureate team.[1169.66][1169.66](applause) Matty Lightfoot, A&amp;M Consolidated High School.[1178.04][1178.04](applause) First place in dictée, first place in listening test.[1186.04][1186.04](applause) Kat Hurtado from Kennesaw.[1194.83][1194.83](applause) Caterina was first place in comic strip.[1202.25][1202.25](applause) Dana Bader.[1213.66][1213.66](applause) College Station High School. Dana scored first place in poetry.[1221.83][1221.83](applause) Lydia Wagner from College Station High School.[1231.57][1231.57](applause) Lydia was first place in sight-reading.[1237.75][1237.75](applause) Madison Huff from A&amp;M Consolidated High School.[1243.99][1243.99](applause) Madison was first place in comic strip. Emily Lee from A&amp;M Consolidated High School.[1251.83][1251.83](applause) Emily was first place in watercolor, first place in comic strip. G.C. Lingan, Lingan, sorry, from College Station High School.[1262.41][1262.41](applause) G.C. was first place in sight-reading. Jackson Lacy from A&amp;M Consolidated High School.[1269.12][1269.12](applause) Jackson was first place in comic strip. Ashley Downs from College Station High School.[1276.12][1276.12](applause) Ashley was first place in listening. Julian Skaggs from College Station High School.[1284.62][1284.62](applause) Julian was first place in grammar.[1292.04][1292.04](applause) Maria Landry. Oh, I'm sorry. We have a couple of coaches here today. Maria Landry is the French teacher and coach at A&amp;M Consolidated High School, and Susan Bailey, coaches and teachers French, College Station High School.[1309.41][1309.41](applause) Our last group of honorees this evening are the Business Professionals of America. Six total students from A&amp;M Consolidated High School and College Station High School recently advanced to the National Business Professionals of America Leadership Conference. The students earned the trip to the national conference in Orlando in May by placing at the state contest in Corpus Christi. As I call your name, please come forward to be recognized. Individual event, national qualifiers. Romina Lasagna, A&amp;M Consolidated High School, business, law, and ethics.[1359.41][1359.41](applause) Abed Rosby, A&amp;M Consolidated High School, extemporaneous speech.[1368.88][1368.88](applause) Matthew Sims, A&amp;M Consolidated High School, payroll accounting.[1379.83][1379.83](applause) Ashika Verma, College Station High School, Java programming.[1393.91][1393.91](applause) Kelvin Wang, A&amp;M Consolidated High School, visual basic and C++ programming.[1416.49][1416.49](applause) David Wu, A&amp;M Consolidated High School, C++ programming.[1425.12][1425.12](applause) And we have a number of our sponsors in here from A&amp;M Consolidated High School: Terry Casto, Kathy Fisher, and Diane Reister.[1435.75][1435.75](applause) And the BPA sponsor at College Station High School, Dennis Rhodes.[1446.75][1446.75](applause) Dr. Yocan, I believe that is all for our recognitions this evening. Before we move on, I just want to say, it is a great honor to be up here and spend twenty-five minutes honoring our high school students. And it's amazing to think about the success that our students all over the school district feel and earn on a daily and a yearly basis. So, thank you, students, for all your hard work in representing College Station ISD, Kennesaw, and College Station High School extremely well. We are very, very proud of you, and we are very proud of the parents, of those parents who were lifting up phones to take pictures and videos. I'd love to have any parents or grandparents of any of our honorees, please stand at this time and be recognized.[1504.25][1504.25](applause) And with that, Dr. Yocan ends our recognitions.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and recognize the artwork that is decorating the boardroom. The artwork tonight is brought to us by Greens Prairie Elementary, A&amp;M Consolidated High School, College Station High School, and College View High School. And as always, we're impressed with what our students have done, not only with the recognitions we had earlier, but we had several art students win awards, and I'm sure we'll get an opportunity to meet some of them in the upcoming board meetings. So, we'll move to item D, consent agenda. The items that are on the consent agenda are G, H1. I can't turn my page. J2, J3, J4, J5, J6, J7, J8, and J9. Does anybody have anything that they would like to pull off of the consent agenda?
I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. All those oppose? The motion carries six-zero. Thank you. We'll move on to board reports. Does anyone on the board have anything they'd like to share with the group?
The Intergovernmental Relations Committee met yesterday. I had a medical procedure, but I did receive a copy of the presentation. It was very informative. It was in regards to Blinn College and the programs that they're doing out on the Relus Campus. I think for us being in education, the number of different programs and options available for kids in the future is very impressive if all goes well as they presented.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I attended, I don't know the name of it, a symposium that was over in the lobby at Kennesaw yesterday, yeah, where a lot of the students that were honored tonight were actually set up presenting some of these projects that won these awards. It's one thing to hear it read, it's quite different when you actually see what they're doing. And these students, I think of them as kids, but they're not. What they can do with computers or the other things that they're involved with is truly amazing. So, I want to commend them for the work they did, again, and thank them for explaining it to me in a way that I could understand. So, it was really, really cool.
Good. Anybody else?
I'm going to, on behalf of Mr. Williams, the Education Foundation will be awarding fifty-two scholarships in the amount of fifty-nine thousand dollars at tomorrow evening's scholarship award reception held at the Transportation Center.
No, 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 Green, Garden.
Hilton Garden. Well, that was probably good for me to know, since I'll be presenting one of them.[1798.83][1798.83](laughter) one of them. Need to write that in my calendar. Anyway, it's an opportunity to tell our community thank you. We saw today, I was part of the senior salute as well at CONSOL, and our community really gives a lot to our students in the way of cash scholarships. And Education Foundation was well represented today through the students. They just went through all of them. But it's quite amazing what our community does to help these kids get to college and to pay for these exorbitant amounts of tuition that I think many of us around this table is well aware of. So, I just want to thank the community for all that they do.
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. Members of the board, I do want to highlight some of the things that are upcoming and do just want to reiterate tomorrow night at 6:00 PM at the Holiday Inn, I'm sorry, the Hilton Garden Inn, now I'm doing it. Hilton Garden Inn on University Drive East, kind of right over there by the Physicians' Center, is where we'll be having the scholarship reception. And invite all those folks to come, everybody to come out and just, it is, I echo Mrs. Barrett's thoughts, it's tremendous about what this community does to support our kids and help open pathways to college. The next night on Thursday, we'll be honoring another group of people in this community, and that's teachers in College Station ISD. We'll be honoring service award winners in multiples of five, some of our most senior administrators. We'll be honoring our retirees, those folks who have given a lifetime of service to the kids in this district and sometimes in many other districts, a lifetime of service for public education. Be able to honor them. And we're also honoring our award winners, our Elementary Teacher of the Year, Secondary Teachers of the Year, Auxiliary and Paraprofessional Employees of the Year. So, it'll be a great night. That starts at 6 o'clock also on Thursday. It's at Grace Bible Church Southwood, which is just over there, adjacent to, across the street from A&amp;M Consolidated High School. So, love for a lot of folks to come and be a part of that and celebrate one of our greatest resources in this district, which is our teachers. After that is going on, next week is a big week for graduations. On Thursday, the 25th, College View High School will have its graduation ceremony at Christ United Methods Church, and that will be at 7:00 PM on Thursday, the 25th. And then, we will have our doubleheader at Reed Arena of graduations on Friday, the 26th. The matinee will be College Station High School at 4 o'clock, and the evening will be CONSOL, A&amp;M Consolidated High School, starting at 7. So, a lot of, we saw a lot of seniors who were in this group and this audience here today, and some seniors in here now, getting that last little bit of government credit done. So, we see you, we recognize you, and we look forward to shaking your hand next week. So, with that, that's the end of my report, Dr. Yoken.
Ms. Horn, do we have any hearing from, uh, hearing of citizens? Thank you. Okay. Then we'll move on to item I, 1. Consider Approval of New Administrative Contract as Recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Dr. Yoken, members of the board. College Station ISD is growing and a vibrant school district. As many people here know, we're adding five schools in five years. We had the opportunity this year to go back and re-expand some of our higher level, top-of-the-organization chart positions, and have Mr. Mike Martindale be the Chief Financial Officer, have Mr. Greg McIntyre be our Chief Administrative Officer, opened up the opportunity for us to hire someone to be a Chief Academic Officer for College Station ISD. We're looking for somebody who can really challenge us in our thinking and really honor us for the great things that we're doing, and really look at us with a critical eye on what we can do and do even better as a school system. We put this out statewide. We had 51 applicants for this position, tremendous amount of depth of people who were interested in coming, either in being a part of College Station ISD. Had a great group made up of central office administrators and campus principals that went through a first-round interview process. We interviewed seven people, seven really quality applicants from across the state and in this district. We had three folks move forward to a second-round interview with me, and I'm pleased to bring to you tonight a recommendation, and I'm going to talk about her in just a second, a recommendation for Dr. Penny Trammell to join College Station ISD and become the Chief Academic Officer for CSISD. Penny, it comes to us from Capella ISD, where she has worked since 1993. She started her teaching career in 1984 in Louisiana. While we won't hold that against her, we're excited that she got to Texas soon, in 93, joining Capella ISD. She rose from the ranks from a teacher to a teacher leader, assistant principal. She was an elementary principal from 2004 to 2011. She rose to become Executive Director of Elementary Education for two years, and since that time has been Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction at Capella ISD, a district about our size and doing a lot of the work that we're involved with at the state level. Penny is an incredible leader. She has a great mind for both systems, thinking and organization, and leading people and collaborating with folks. She's led a campus, she's led a system of elementary schools, she's led an entire district towards transformational work and growth, and we're excited for her to come and join us. And Penny is here today. Penny is, Dr. Trammell is here with her husband, Andy. If you guys would please stand so we can get a chance to see you. So, we are very excited to have Penny join our team and have the Trammels move to College Station and join our community. She really overwhelmed the committee with both her knowledge and her passion for education and for kids. So, with that, Dr. Yoken, members of the board, it is my recommendation that the Board of Trustees of College Station ISD name Dr. Penny Trammell as the Chief Academic Officer for the school district.
Thank you, Dr. Ely.
I make the motion to approve as recommended by the superintendent.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All those oppose? So, the motion carries 6-0. Welcome to College Station. We'll move on to item J, 1. Consider Approval of the Purchase of the Storage Area Network for College Station ISD from Avanex per Department of Information Resources DIR contract in the amount of $295,454.80 to be paid for from the 2015 bond funds. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. In a growing district with more students and teachers and facilities, we have even more needs to be able to store our electronic data. And so, we have for your consideration tonight, a purchase of an additional SAN storage area network for CSISD. With more information on that, it's Mike Martindale, Deputy Superintendent for Business and Operations. Mr. Martindale?
Thank you, Dr. Ely. Dr. Yoken, board members, as a part of our 2015 bond program, our Technology Department identified the need to expand the district's storage area network to accommodate the growing file storage needs of the district. This specific quote provided via the Department of Information Resources Contract 3359 from Avanex addresses this identified need. The Department of Information Resources is a state agency that has established contracts with vendors for technology-related products and services. It is administration's recommendation that College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees approve the purchase of the Hewlett-Packard Storage Area Network Solutions from Avanex for the price of $295,454.80 for the DIR Contract 3359 to be paid from the 2015 bond funds.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Oh, pardon me. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to abstain from discussion and voting on the board.
Thank you for your abstinence. I would move that we approve this as presented.
Any discussion? Please, let's not have any discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. All those oppose? So, the motion carries five with one abstention. Do we want to talk about anything else? The government students don't get off so easy.
I really feel like they're getting off easy tonight, given that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Progression did pay off. Well done.
With that, we're going to move to item L, 1. Oh, no, we could have them wait the whole time we're in. That would be good.
Oh, that we could do.
So, let's explain what happens next. Okay, so, we're going to move to item L, 1, and that is executive session. And, um... It doesn't have all my little language here. Okay, so, we're going to consult with our legal counsel regarding our pending or contemplated litigation, including pursuit of mediation pursuant to the Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.0821. And so, when we're done with that, we'll come back and open session, and then we'll adjourn. We could, you guys could be here all night. No, I'm only kidding. You don't have to stay. If you have to get something signed, hurry and get it signed before we go into executive session, because who knows when we'll come back out.
You're done. Look at him, he's going, "You're done."
All right, this meeting is adjourned.